Madam Chair, on the first agenda item, it's going to have to be put off a week because he didn't get the submittal.
In accordance with Chapter 2 of the Arts Acts of 2023, which extends the Governor's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the Open Meeting Law, GLC 30A Section 20, until March 31, 2025, this meeting will be conducted both in person and virtually via Google Meets. The meeting will be recorded by SMAC cable television and broadcast live and may be livestreamed at www.stoughtonTV.org. A recording of the meeting transcript or other comprehensive record, other proceeding will be posted on the town's website and/or SMAC as soon as possible after the meeting if live broadcast or livestreaming is unsuccessful. Times are approximate and items may be taken out of order at the chair's discretion. So with that said, item number five, to consider and retain special counsel regarding PFAS litigation, will be put on our next Select Board meeting. Everything else remains the same. Let's start out with Select Board comments. Are there any Select Board comments? Oh, no one has anything? Lou didn't raise his hand. No one has any? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Due to Thanksgiving and kind of screwing things up, but it never seems to stop death. We have a passing of Mary Reed. That's Captain Jake Reed's wife, longtime police officer in the town of Stoughton. He's a captain. And she was 92. She was a graduate of Stoughton High. She had two children. And she loved to go to Maine. Whenever I did any work over there, she would tell me about the pies she would make in Maine. She goes, "I'm bringing you home one." She always would. But she was married to Jack for 67 years. So that's quite an accomplishment. Like I said, she liked to spend time in Maine. She was a teacher's aide at the DAW school for many, many, many years. And they would travel all over. They'd been to Israel, everywhere. And she said to me, she's never wanted for anything and never thought she would get to see the stuff that they did. So to Captain Reed, their son Scott, and their daughter that's in Sharon, Deborah, I would like to say from the Board of Selectmen that our sorrow for his loss be so noted. Now we have one that... I know Joe called me and I had already got the call. And it's kind of a piece of history, an icon in the town of Stoughton, and it was James Williams Jr. Jimmy was the... He worked for the Public Works for 44 years, but he was the superintendent for 26 years. And he fought in Korea. He was a mason and an aloppo shrineer. He was a mason for 57 years and a shrineer for 39. So that's pretty outstanding. And they always tell me, "All shriners are masons, but not all masons are shriners." That's their little thing. But Jimmy was a bondholder of CW Welsh, which I can say that I'm proud to be a bondholder there with him. And his wife, Margie, and him were married 68 years. Which is... And when he passed away, he was surrounded by all his family, which consists of Rad, his youngest son, his oldest boy, James III, passed away, preceded him. But Margie was there. She handled it well. That lady's a rock. She also worked at the library for many, many years, donated a lot of time to the town. But I would just like to say that Jim, he's the type of guy that they broke the mold. He was kind, caring, but he was all business. And as big as his smile was, you knew he meant business. But he was a hard, hard worker. Everybody knew what he was. He did what he could to take care of our roads. When we didn't have computed operated stuff and some of the equipment wasn't so advanced as it is now. So those guys kind of earned their snowstorms that we had. So to Jimmy, his family, Jimmy's family, which is Rad, his wife, Margie, his grandchildren, which are my cousin, Ann's, and Rad's grandchildren. I extend to them such sadness and sorrow that I feel for them. And I saw it at the private viewing, at the private burial. There was a lot of people there. And good members from the town of Stoughton Public Works were there. The color guard came. It was a nice send-off for a man who deserved it. He'd be saying, "Why are you making a big thing out of it?" So what I'd like to ask the Board is, I'd like to make a motion since his dad was on the Public Works for more than 50 years. So together, they fought 44 years, and 44 years. So they have 88 years. But they also, the great-grandfather, Jim's grandfather, which would be Rad's, his son's, great-grandfather, worked when they just had a highway department. And then Jim's father was told to put it together and he became the first superintendent of the Public Works. So it's over 120 years of the Williams family doing that. So I'd like to ask the Board if we can do what I asked the town to do for Gene Fleming, if we could name the foyer at the Public Works when you enter in. I don't know if you want to do James Williams Sr. and James Williams Jr., or if we just call it the Williams foyer. I'll take whichever way you want to do it. But I would ask that of the Board in a motion, please.
Before you move on for discussion, I heard Mr. McCrisky made a comment.
I think it'd be better, Scott, with all three names. The Williams family, their years of service. You just nailed it. You don't get things like that for community service. You know, even from... In my years, I don't think there's ever been a tenure like that of any family that served the town of Stoughton.
I don't know if you'd ever see it again either.
I don't think so. And I did... If I could follow up just with a comment.
Go ahead.
You mentioned, and I think, do you have one more as well?
No, no, that's it.
Okay. Both Jack Reed and Jimmy Williams, 1992. It was a long time ago. And I'll guarantee you, I gave both of them gray hair and probably gave them a stress level beyond recognition. You know, when you get involved, and I think it happens to almost everybody that gets involved with municipal government, you get involved and you think you're going to change the world. You think you know where all the problems are. You think you have all the solutions and you're just the person for the job. And then when you get into it for about five years, you feel like you haven't accomplished anything. And then when you get to be in your 20th year, sitting on a board that goes back over 30 years of my involvement in town, you realize you didn't know dittily. You know, and in their memory, I'd like to kind of say, "I'm sorry I did that. I didn't do it intentionally." But in my older age now and seeing the job that our staff does now, you know, the work that goes into it, you just don't appreciate it when you're younger, I guess. You know, you don't know. The more you learn and you see what it takes. You know, you mentioned two of the greats, you know, in the town. And for the DPW, if you add Larry Barrett in there, you know, that even adds to it, you know, of the tenure of just, you know, four people right there, you know, that really made a difference in this town. Five, I'm sorry, five. That have, you know, if you add up all those years, just five people, it's just miraculous. I wish we could get back to some of that, some of those times, you know, that we had then. So thank you.
May I have a second on that motion, please?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just to clarify, the motion is to name it the Williams or the Williams family foyer?
I'd list the three individual names and the years of service.
Friendly amendment.
Okay. Thank you.
Motion made seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
And I will... Aye as well. Next, I would like...
Thank you.
A moment of silence for those that Mr. Carrera mentioned. Our deepest sympathy to the family and friends. Mr. McCrisky, did you have another comment?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. I'd like to have on the next agenda placed... We have... There's been some changes and so forth regarding the naming of veteran squares over the years. And for whatever reason, there's two names that have never made it into an application. And there, as we all know here, that is the Selectmen's authority for the naming of veteran squares. And I would make the motion tonight, but I think I'm going to take the extra step that I ask that we put on the agenda, on the consent agenda, for the next meeting, the naming of two squares to be determined. And I hope he's not watching on TV. The first one is the late Charlie Lodge, who was our Veterans Officer for a number of years, retired lieutenant from the Stoughton Fire Department as well. And anybody who is in our generation will remember the dedication of Charlie Lodge to Veterans Affairs in the town. Was there at every parade, every square dedication, you know, anything that was going on for the veterans. And his family lives out of state. They haven't ever applied. But these are people that are icons of our community and I would like to see that they get a square named on their behalf. The second one is Joe DeVito, who is now in his 90s. World War II Vet, PT Boat member. And Joe was involved with Business in Town, Chamber of Commerce, so many things. You know, that if there are many people here, I know Joe DeVito. And these two, I think, are fitting that the Board use their authority to appoint these squares. So I'd ask that they be put on the next agenda, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Jilda. Please record. Any other Select Board comments? With there being none, let's move to Town Manager comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. No comments this evening.
Thank you very much. We're moving right along to Citizens' comments. Mrs. Walsh, yes?
Cynthia Walsh, 1096 Park Street. I would ask the Board that when you consider scheduling a special town meeting, that the Town Manager, the Superintendent of Schools, and the Moderator sit down and find out what dates the auditorium and the high school is available, and then count backwards to when you open the warrant so we don't have a repeat of this past one. I can, but I'm not going to take time to list everything that was wrong with that meeting. And I want to thank the Moderator, Mrs. Mullin, the School Department, various town meeting representatives, SMAC, for accommodating me as much as they could. But there was one accommodation I could not get from the School Department. Access to the handicap bathroom is locked. In order to use the bathroom, I had to ask a custodian to unlock the door. That is humiliating when you are 76 years old to have to get permission to use the bathroom. I have to say that I was treated by the custodial staff with courtesy and respect. One of them even took it upon himself to escort me from the accessible entrance across the building to the cafeteria. And I also know that those gentlemen set up the cafeteria. They had to move a lot of furniture, set up a lot of furniture. But I never expected, at my age, to have to ask anyone's permission to use the bathroom.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Walsh. And yes, we'll follow through with that. Are there any other Citizens' comments? Moving right along to item number six. So item number five will be discussed in our next Select Board meeting. Item number six is Town Managers' Preliminary Recommendation of Expenses and Fiscal Year 25 Budget Draft of the Four-Year Capital Budget, Policy on Hiring Process, Job Descriptions, and Organizational Structure. This will be one of a total of three reviews of the budget. So I ask that we not take a vote tonight. It's not listed on our agenda either. We will have a total of three times to review from the presentation of Mr. Coulter and his staff. Then the next steps, we'll make amendments as we deem necessary. And that becomes the Select Board's budget. And that's the budget that will go to FinCom on or around January 12. With that said, I ask Mr. Coulter, please begin.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and through you to the members. Excuse me. We began this FY '25 budget process on October 3. Since that time, almost, well, a little over two months ago now, we have met with staff, every department head twice. And we'll be meeting with them again in the next week. What you have before you is the FY '25 operating expense budget. You also have the four-year capital budget. The process started with guidance from this Board as to percent increases, level services, and et cetera. Typical guidance that we would get from the policymakers of the community. We then, as I said, had department head meetings with each department head individually, where they took the guidance we gave them to create their first pass at the operating budget. Tonight, we'll present that expense budget. I want to share with you the many challenges we had this year. I would say that the process to date has been very efficient due to the efforts of Mark and Trish, Deanna, and Mary Jane. However, the challenges we're dealing with that are not news to anybody that's doing a budget these days are the impact that inflation has had on our expenses and the impact that the labor market has had on our ability to recruit, to recruit and retain and to pay people fairly. It's been an excruciating process, lots of research, lots of data. On that point, in the budget before you, you're going to find yellow highlights. Those highlights reflect what we believed would be the questions we would ask if we were on your side of the table. Typically above 5%. Now, there may be something above 30%, but it may be $300. So we didn't highlight that. But those that we would be interested if we were on your side of the table, we've highlighted them. And as we go through the process, we won't present to you what is easily read. We'll go right to the yellow highlights and ask if you have questions on the yellow highlights. I will point to you, though, at the end of the presentation, below the expense line for each department head, there are footnotes. And those footnotes give you information on all of those yellow highlighted categories. If you have a question this evening, I'll challenge you. I don't think you will. That we can't answer with details. Then Jilda will record your question. We're not going to guess. We'll write back to you tomorrow with answers to those questions. But I'm pretty sure we'll have it all covered. Now, I'd like to refer you to this blue book, if you wouldn't mind. I'm going to go through the Table of Content and this book is going to grow as we get into new subject matter and as the research grows. The first section is the Town Meeting Schedule and Mr. Tisdale is going to bring us through that schedule right after we finish the Table of Content. The second item is a thumb drive. And if you go to page 3, it lists, Section 2, pardon me, it lists the information that's in that thumb drive. Scott wasn't quite sure what the thumb drive was, but I've explained that to him and he's in good shape now. So there's organization charts, job descriptions, salary grids, longevity information, and the Town Manager's hiring policy. The third item, if you go to Section 3, is our proposed new hire list. It shows that at the end of the day, we will have 2.5 less FTEs than we have in fiscal '24. You're going to hear later on that there may be 25 less FTEs. And that's because we did a zero-based FTE count. So the numbers you had last year were highly inflated because nobody had ever done what's called zero-based budgeting. We did zero-based FTEs and we counted them from the first employee in each department to the last employee. So you will see that actual last year FTEs to this year will be down 2.5%. Item, line item... So this item shows the new FTEs that we're proposing and the decrease in dispatch, which is showing a negative nine. Next, in item 4, we're showing you the employees in this budget that we are recommending for substantial pay increases either due to a promotion or a market adjustment. And we provide the supporting information for each of those recommendations. And number 5, you see a summary in each department of FTEs for FY '24 versus FTEs. And for other people, that's full-time equivalent employees for fiscal '24 versus '25. And we also show you the triple Es, the EEEs. If you go to number 6, we do a comparative salary analysis for those people... Excuse me, some market analysis that we have within our own town. And then for each person, we go outside of our town and show you information for the state and for the federal census data. You'll see five fast facts about an issue that we're dealing with in this town and throughout. You'll see backup for each of the people we're asking to give an increase to. Item number 9, you've got the organization structure. Item number 10 is the four-year capital plan that has been updated over the last two weeks. And with that, we end. And you'll see on the back to the Table of Contents, there's going to be a revenue analysis that we're doing tomorrow and you'll have it for your next meeting. That'll be the topic of your next meeting. What we project for revenues is very, very, very important in terms of how much we can spend. We now know what our new growth is. We've got good data to show what other towns are recommending for revenue growth based upon economic activities. And then we're working very closely in Section 12 with the Superintendent, with the Chair of the School Committee, with our Chair, in developing a joint cost MOU. We're going to send that memo out to all the parties tomorrow afternoon and then set up follow-up meetings after that. So in our third meeting with you, we'll hopefully bring with you an MOU ready to be executed for an agreement on the joint costs. So that's backup information. This book will grow. We will have other backup information. The theme for the meeting this year has been supporting data. To give you supporting data in a format that's easy to recover, easy to retrieve, easy to understand. And we think it'll help us as we go before the FinCom for the budget hearings as well. So please keep this book with you. It's going to grow. My bet is by the time you vote on the budget, there'll probably be 12 more items for 20 to 25 items. I hope you find that information helpful. So before we move forward, if you have any questions on that, I'd be happy to answer them. If not, Mark is going to explain the calendar moving forward. Through you, Madam Chair.
Hello, Mark. How are you? Mr. Tisdale.
Very good. How are you?
Going pretty good.
Good. All right, thank you very much. As Mr. Coulter said, we've created a calendar, a timeline, for this town meeting. A lot of it's already completed, a lot of the key dates. I'll give credit to Mr. Kevie. About two or three years ago, he sotted the template for this and I really liked it. It was kind of preset by the... A lot of the points in this are preset by the charter, different policies of the Selectmen, and so on. I also added a lot of things to do with department head, you know, due dates in this calendar. So now it's a very comprehensive timeline for everybody. Certain boards and committees, department heads, Town Manager, and so on. So the way this calendar is set up, like I said, there's a lot of dates on it. But in yellow are kind of the key dates for your Select Board and the Town Manager over the next two months. Just like to recap these so everybody understands what the next two months is all about. As you see, the first highlighted line is today's date. Today's date is called the first presentation of the Town Manager's budget to the Select Board. Expenses only. So today, we're just mostly covering the expense portion of the budget. We are working on the revenues currently. We also have in your blue binder... And I give Mr. Coulter credit on the binder. You know, I was going to bust his chops a little bit with the old-school binder thing, but I actually like it. If it was me, you'd see something on the screen up there, but I do like the binder. I've grown to like it over the last couple of days. Yeah, I like the binder. I got to give him credit.
I heard Scott loud and clear.
I got to give him credit, so... In the binder is the capital plan. It's a draft capital plan. That's the four-year capital plan. So you have that for your review. As you know, in January, we usually get into the capital plan, the warrant items, things like that. So there's an article that the Select Board wants to put on the capital plan that you see missing or something like that. Be thinking about it. And we can... Honestly, the process, you can follow the same process as the department heads. If you have an article, send it over to me. We can put it on the draft capital plan. If you need backup information or need assistance getting the backup information and estimate a quote, we can help you. And that's been the process. The process included screening by Mr. Coulter and myself, so you may have to get his approval about your article. But other than that, you should be all right. Moving on to next week, now 12/12, we have the second presentation. That's going to include a more refined expense budget. And then we'll have our first revenue estimate. So the week after that, 12/19, we'll have a very comprehensive budget, operating budget, to go through. Revenue and expenses, you know, hopefully includes some of your comments up to that date rolled into the budget. And then the last week in December, on 12/28, that would be the final presentation of the Town Manager budget and we'll go through the final joint cost recommendations at that point. As you know, at the end of December, the budget needs to be submitted from the Town Manager officially to the Select Board. So if we do our job right in the month of December, when we get to January, it's more just kind of polishing it up and tweaking it a bit, hopefully. But you do get pretty much to January 16 for the Select Board budget to be reviewed by your Board. And that date, you have to submit it to the Finance Committee on the 16th of January. So if you have a meeting on the 9th, you can also go through the budget that night. That night, we expect to go through a four-year capital plan with your Board, a more detailed approach to it. And then we'll go through the FY '25 K... And then we'll go through the FY '25 capital in detail. So that's the capital for this upcoming town meeting. The department head's been great with this. They've gotten us, we've already started early. We've gotten a lot of the estimates and quotes in. We've got all the items on the capital plan. We don't think it's going to change much from now till then. We've created a nice, organized process this year where we're going to have one, we have one Google document. This is where the technology comes into play and helps. The Google document, where there's going to be one point of contact of who puts the article in the document. That would be Brian Winner. I will also have access to it, but then everybody else is read-only, so that nobody can change the document. We don't have 10 copies of a Microsoft Word document, or paper copies floating all over the place. We have one place where it all goes, and it's edited by essentially one person. My job is to help Brian, if he needs help adding things to that document. So we'll have that one document, and then I'll be organizing all the information, like the estimates and backup for the capital plan. And when we have our meetings in January, we'll make one PDF for your board. You'll have a nice, organized, probably another binder, I'm assuming, with all the backup information and tabs associated with the capital plan with all the information. So I think we have a really nice process in place right now. As you know, the end date is February 6. That's the first Tuesday in February. That's where the warrant closes for the select board. So that's like our final date. We've lumped a couple of meetings together with different items. On the 9th, you'll see there's three things on that. We just mentioned the capital plan, FY '25 capital plan, and your budget review on the 16th. We're assuming you're going to go through and vote your budget and send it off to the finance committee. And then at that same meeting, you could open up your warrant, so that would be January 16th if you choose to, and then close it on February 6th, which gives us a decent amount of time to put articles in and vet them properly. So essentially, that's the upcoming month or two. After that, there's some other moderator tasks that are listed in this budget that the moderator's been involved with, and so on. So that's all we've got for the timeline and schedule. If you see something missing or a blatant error in this, please let me know. I'll update it and send it back to the board.
Madam Chair, I would ask the members if there are any questions before we proceed with each budget.
Questions?
That's a very good sign, Mark.
No questions.
It's a very good sign.
I do want to recognize that we have the superintendent, Dr. Baita, in the audience, and I believe that's the chair, I can't, chair of the school committee, I can't see, but we do have a couple of school committee members in the audience. And respectfully, I say hello to you and welcome. Thank you very much. Let's move on.
Madam Chair, your first budget is the legal account. It's a 1.4% year-over-year budget. There's nothing that really stands out. We're carrying last year's budget pretty much moving forward, although we see decreases coming in labor contract negotiations because we'll have everybody under a three-year budget this year, and we're not presently dealing with any lawsuits or any grievances. So I'm very comfortable with it being level. As we get closer to the fiscal year end, we may be able to adjust this down, but right now, I think a 1.4% increase is correct. As you know, a substantial portion of it is a lump-sum contract with Talaman and Associates for general counsel, and then it's an hourly rate for labor counsel. In addition, in that number is Jack Dolan's contract, which is probably the best deal you could ever get. He's on speed dial with our department heads and our HR so that we handle things correctly and don't get into labor issues. He gives us excellent guidance, and his is a lump-sum fee. So my recommendation for this first budget is a 1.4% increase to the legal budget. I'll keep going on until I'm stopped with questions. Is that fair? The next budget is a very small budget, town moderator. The two major changes we made here is some of his advertising has increased, as you note in footnote one. And in footnote two, we've moved the temporary wages over to the clerk's office, and you'll see that come up later as we review the clerk's budget. Both the moderator and the town clerk are in agreement with this transfer of expenses. The next budget is the select board budget. As you'll note, it's a flat budget. Nothing has changed, or very little has changed, from FY '24 through FY '25. There's no questions?
2.5% rate.
We're going to increase what you get now by 2.5%. Next one's a bit more complicated, the town manager's budget, and I want to explain it. First of all, you'll note for the department head, for the town manager, I haven't been offered and I would not accept a merit increase. I'm going to take a COLAR of 2.5, just like others in the town. As you look at the first line item, longevity, that's a contractual responsibility we have with the new CBAs. Other wages, footnote one, communications coordinator, that's a new position that we've budgeted, I believe, for $65,000. I'm correct? The next item, item number three, it's per the MOA in the new contract for stipend for training and education, should they avail themselves of that. So if they don't, that money would revert back. It's two employees at $27,500. Item number four, footnote number four, as you know, in the manager's contract, there was a provision for a vehicle. That didn't present itself because of tight finances, so we're asking for some sort of car allowance in the next fiscal year in light of not getting the contractual requirement of a vehicle. Item number five is a contractual union agreement. And number six are additional meetings and increased pricing for those meetings, for conferences. Be happy to take any questions on the manager's budget.
One point of clarification to the board. You'll see it throughout the budget. You can take the department head's salary, the town manager's salary for this budget. Because we have 26.1 pay periods in this budget, a 2.5% increase equates to a 2.9% increase in the budget because you have 26.1 pay periods. So when you compare FY '25 to '24, since '24 was a 26.0 pay period, it looks like you're getting a 2.9% increase, but it's just more pay periods for that year.
And that applies to each department?
Every department. Yep.
The next section, the next account is, where am I?
Finance committee.
Is the finance committee. A minor change in that for mailings and production and so forth. Nothing very significant. 7,500, excuse me, $427,250, and I assume, for whatever reason, I don't have notes on this, it has to do with their reserve fund. Yes, the major increase, $20,000 in their reserve fund. And we'll highlight that in the next iteration of the budget, from 330 to 350. The overall budget increase for the finance committee is 4.8%. If you look down below in the expense fund, the reserve fund has been increased from 330 to $350,000. That's the significant increase in this budget. $20,000 increase. And again, we will highlight that in yellow in the next iteration. It's page eight, okay? You notice we numbered the pages this year? Okay. Town accountant. Next is the town accountant. You'll see a large percentage increase of 18.8. The first number, there is some, I have the old one. You want to go through the numbers we had adjusted.
All right. Item number one, footnote one, assistant town accountant. That salary went up from $80,000 to $87,455. The footnote says employee hired at higher rate of 85 than the 2.5 increase. Do you have anything to add to that?
Yes, I do. The town auditor, if you look at your page, this is the first place where there's an employee getting a significant increase. So if you open to section four, pay increase is above 2.5%. The first one we're asking for is number nine on your list. The auditor, I won't mention any names, just positions, if that's okay with you. Number nine, the town auditor has been working as the assistant town accountant and has received a $20,000 stipend for that work. When the new finance director is trained, that stipend will go away, and she will be reporting to her post of town auditor. Given her exemplary service to the towns ever since the former town accountant left, we did market research to see what town auditors are making right now, and she's substantially underpaid. So we're asking, and in this budget, we've forecasted a salary of $104,500. And you'll see that as item number nine under section four.
Yep, the finance director.
And the finance director, right now, we have it, my budget, $154. That's what I should look at.
Yep, correct.
It is?
$154, yeah.
But that's not what we're hiring.
No, it's going to be lower.
Right. It's budget at $154. We did that before we started the negotiation. We've offered her a number less than that. We're pretty sure she's going to accept it. If she does, and we'll know that on Thursday, then we'll adjust that number to the new number. It won't be higher, it will be substantially lower. Thank you, Mark.
Mr. Coulter, I have a question regarding the organizational structure today and in the future.
Yes.
The near future. So the auditor, internal auditor, right now, she sits in the accountant department.
Correct.
In the future, where will that position?
She will move in, I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
She'll move back into the finance area. So on that org structure, I believe you'll see the finance manager, then the department head for treasurer-collector, the department head for assessing, and the internal auditor will be on that staff. While we're on that, it's worth noting, the internal auditor's role is going to change. Based upon what we've seen this individual do in the last 90 days, she was hiding all those skills before. We expect her, unlike the previous auditor, this auditor is, yes, going to identify problem areas in the organization proactively before they become catastrophic. Once identified, she'll be assigned to that department to implement the solution to the problem, implement a reorganization, a restructuring, a correction, a retraining, but she won't just identify the problem. She'll identify it, and we have four that we're working on right now, and then spend time on the ground in that department implementing the action plan for fixing the business. So it's a little bit of a role than a standard auditor, and still, what we're offering her for pay is only at about 50% of what traditional auditors are doing.
Yeah, no, I'd also like to pick up on what town manager Coulter said. I mean, really, Mary Jane needs a real round of applause almost. It's been amazing what she's accomplished lately. I cannot believe, every time I walk in her office, she's very busy. I get emails from her on Saturday and Sunday nights, morning times, and I'm not even kidding you, for the last three or four months, all the time. She's literally doing that job day and night, in the morning time when she wakes up, and I walk in there and she still holds a very good personality. She's still laughing, I think, most of the time. A couple of times, I was a little questionable, but most of the time, she's laughing. She's done a great job, and she really needs to be commended for her great service to this town over the last three or four months. And like Tom said, she was under the radar before, and now she's really showing us what her capabilities are in this type of situation. Without her, if we didn't have her right now, it'd be a dumpster fire. I wouldn't even know how to handle what we're doing right now without Mary Jane, so.
A real sign of character is how a person steps up in a crisis. With two weeks' notice of her predecessor, at the time, we hadn't yet closed our books, and we're just starting the budget process, that constitutes a crisis. Mary Jane submitted closing documents and all the relating forms to DOR, which, for the first time in a long time, were accepted on the first pass. Just like when Tricia submitted the recap, accepted on the first pass, and has managed and spearheaded this budget process from the beginning. So what you're looking at, members, is a finance department with the addition of the person you've chosen to be the leader of that department. I think I can pretty much assure you, you will not have any unforeseen and unpredictable crises that could have been detected well in advance. We're now turning from a reactive phase to a very proactive phase. As you see, when we get to purchasing, part of that proactiveness is saving $500,000 with vendors below what we're spending right now with our top 30 vendors. So we're making an investment of what is a $70,000 position for a purchasing manager with a goal of saving a half a million dollars from our current expense level. So that's part of being proactive, and many of those initiatives, ideas, and implementation will be led by our new town auditor, and we're very excited about that.
Yep, very good.
Any other questions on the accounting yellow highlights or any other?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Yes, Mr. G.
And it's to any financial person who's sitting in this room. I didn't think that it was a good idea to put the auditing function in the same area as the, under the financial director. And so maybe somebody could educate me on that.
I'd love to do that.
I was going to agree with that, but I was going to wait until
Sure.
we were making the amendments, but I agree with you.
So through you, Madam Chair, I apologize for stepping over you. I agree with your point nine out of 10 times. The difference is, most of our problems have a financial component, but they're operating problems. Let me give you a couple of examples.
Well, you don't need to. I have seen problems before. You need not do that.
Okay.
It's, if it's only nine out of 10 versus 10 out of 10 times, then I would suggest that you think very seriously about separating that, and I respect and admire the work that Mary Jane is doing. But I think from a fiscal perspective, it's really important to make sure that you have a clean separation between those two functions.
Sure.
And she, I think, should report to you.
So I would like to address that because Lou makes a good point, and I understand your trepidation as well. And if that's, at the end of the day, what we want to do, then certainly we should do that. Let me give you a couple of examples of, maybe the term auditor is misleading. We don't have any indication of any misappropriation, malfeasance, or bad behavior, and we look, I know, and we look pretty hard. What we have difficulty with are people who are not trained well enough. So mistakes are made in the accounting system just because they don't understand munis the way they need to understand munis. In water and sewer, we're bringing on a new billing system once we put the meters in place. It's going to be a major transformation that Mary Jane will lead, and it'll be months of training to do it right and keep it right. There are other examples where we're handling way too much cash, that we want to convert them to electronic billing. And she has identified it in making the change to make sure it works. One other, VNA. We're changing over to external billing in VNA. It's going to require probably 30 days of every system they use is going to change. And the theory is, the town has spoken clearly that they want VNA even if there's a deficit. And I'm so happy when they felt that way. But we still have an obligation to make sure we reduce the deficit with good business practices. And our new manager of the VNA has highlighted a lot of areas where we can capture more revenue by changing our billing system. So bringing that new system online, we've identified it. Now we've got to have somebody spearhead it on the ground, in their office, every hour of every spearhead it on the ground, in their office, every hour of every day until it's done. That's really the definition of our auditor. But your point is well taken, both of you, and Mark and I'll discuss that with the new Finance Manager, and we'll get a response back to you.
Thank you very much. Mr. McCrisky, you had a question?
Not a question, but a comment. Just my position is that I'll refer to, I've said consistently, I believe in having a strong Town Manager, and our board is probably all aware that the Town Manager does have the authority within the Town Charter to reassign people, to abolish departments, create departments, reassign personnel, duties, and responsibilities. So I would just caution us to how much we get involved with suggesting, you know, changes that is well within the Town Manager's authority in the Town Charter. It's just my thought. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
If there's any, no other questions, I'll go to the next section.
Next section, please.
I appreciate that feedback. So if you look at the next one, it's centralized purchasing, a fairly small department, but the increase is significant, and it's all to our telephone system. Our, our maintenance program has expired, so our cost for maintaining the system and the phone, the fax lines, it's just increased by contract. So we're going, we're going to have to shop that around now that the contract has expired, and we'll do that in this new fiscal year. But right now, our expenses are projected to be $39,000 for that line item that was $25,000 when it was under warranty and, and a service agreement. That's the only change in this budget. So that is a target for our new Purchasing Manager, to find an alternate, alternate vendor for that service.
Can you repeat what you said? Did you say new Purchasing Director, or did I mishear that?
That is a potential new hire in the Procurement Office, a Purchasing Manager.
That will report to Fran?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I got it.
Who will focus on our top 30 vendors to save us the half a million dollars.
It's not a new FTE.
It, it, great point, Mark. It's not a new FTE, because there was a slot in there that we couldn't hire a Purchasing Manager for what we were offering. We went a year of, of looking for a Purchase Manager, and so we've increased it modestly, and we think we've got some good candidates internally and externally. So it's not a new FTE. Any other questions on centralized purchasing?
No.
The next one is Board of Assessors. On number one, we're going to be recruiting first of the, 1st of July for an assistant, excuse me, for Department Head. We have already done the market research. The range is, is between 112 and 120 per year. We're budgeted at 115. The consultant rates, the consultants to this department are critically important. They, we have a consultant that does the billing, and we have a consultant who's here for a day a week as our entire staff is continuing with their training. Remember, it was only six months ago, the three full-time people in our office, not one of them had assessing background, and it was because of Tricia's leadership, she went and got the training quickly, that not only have we stabilized that department, you've seen our new growth at almost $900,000 because we're capturing all the billing. So our goal is, by the 1st of July, to have that Department Head onboard. The second point is regarding the consultants and their rate. The third point is increased certification for everybody on staff. If you're going to work in the Assessing Department, you must be certified, and they're all in certification classes right now. What is item number four? The revaluation, we're in an off-year, so that's $25,000 per year. $25,000 per year, that's correct, up from 22. And the rest is just additional supplies. So it's, it is a reasonable increase, excuse me, a high increase of 12.2%, but now we're fully staffed and making market rates. As soon as we get the full-time assessor onboard, this staff should be stabilized for years to come. One thing I will note for future years, perhaps when Mark and I aren't here to say it, if there's one department that must always be stable and well-trained, it is our Assessing Department. If things go wrong in that department, everything else crumbles. Any questions on the Assessing Budget? With that, the next one is Treasurer Collector. The first foot, all the number-one footnotes are contractual MOA increases. Footnote number two, Medicaid Billing Service, we're going to look closely at that this week. We're not quite sure, it's paid every year, but we're not quite sure exactly what it's for. It's been getting paid automatically, it's $26,000. As you know, Paula was out with COVID, so we weren't, we didn't get a chance to track it down last week, but we'll know what that $26,000 is before our next meeting. Item number, increasing cost. Yes, item number three, increase in the cost and usage. That's for postage with all the mailings they do. Believe it or not, the stamp goes up, and it can create, with the same volume of mailings, that's a $10,000 increase, 13.3%. With the same number of mailing, it's just the increase in cost of mailing. And as you can see, item number two, that's one of the costs we think should be in shared cost, but again, that's an agenda that we're going to be speaking with the Superintendent and the School Committee about, and, and with you about the next meeting. Any other questions for the Treasurer Collector? Now, the Human Resource one is the one where I had the bad numbers. You've got, you've got the new numbers. If you wouldn't mind taking that.
All right, so the number-one footnote is the Department Head salary. That's the most substantial increase in this department.
And I'll speak to that.
Okay. You have the wrong number, okay. The number I have in my book is 116,133.
It's the one below it.
Okay.
That's way understate, and it's not in yours. It wasn't mine.
Okay, the Assistant Department Head is 80,706.
So I would like to refer you, if I may, I just had bad numbers for the first two. I'd like you to point to Section 4, and I would like to go.
Sorry, Mr. Coulter, could you just turn your mic on?
I'm so sorry. Mr. Gito, if you go to Section 4 again in your blue book, and it's number four, again, I, I won't use names. We've got an HR Department, we've talked about this in the past, that has done yeoman's work with two people in that department. As you do a market comparison both in the town and a market comparison in the state, this person, it's the only person in town that I would say, I'm not recommending it, we owe this person retro pay. To say that she is underpaid, and I can talk for an hour if you'd like, giving you the examples of how she is underpaid and what she does. She manages all of our labor contracts, does the payroll and, and benefits and services for the town and the school site, or at least a big portion of the school site. Negotiated, in not-too-distant memory, a settlement with our unions on the insurance dilemma we found ourselves in last year. That was done because the employees in this town trust and respect her. If you look at her salary compared to market, she's in the 60 percentile, and I'm not asking that she'd be brought up to the 100 percentile, but I am asking that she'd be brought up to the 80 percentile. What we're paying her versus the value she brings is just off the charts. And I, again, the data that's in there as exhibits will support the recommendation. In your exhibits, under her name, you see a summary of the, of the things she does. You will see the certifications that they've taken in this past year, both her and her assistant, to become certified in Municipal Human Resource Management, and you'll see cost comparisons in the market and in our own town. And so if there is a line item on there, and I don't mind going out on a limb and saying this, that is so important to Mark and I that be adjusted, it's this one-line item. Her assistant will become, and by the way, this is a promotion to Director of Human Resources. Her assistant, current assistant, will become the new Assistant Director of Human Resources, has gone through the exact same training, that pay increase, as you'll see in the number, number five on that list, is more modest, it's not as, as magnificent, but the director's been here 33 years, and to be doing what she's doing and making what she's making, for me personally, is an embarrassment. So I'm really hoping that, that you'll consider that as we take this up. So with that, you can go to, number two is the assistant, that would be given a, an increase of, Tracy, of $8,000. If you go to bullet point number three, new position with clerical duties, we're negotiating this with the, the school superintendent and the school committee. This person would be dedicated exclusively to school activities, payroll, benefits, retirement, you name it. So if the schools take on those responsibilities, we will not have to hire this person. But if we're going to continue to do it, we have to hire this person. As you know, the two members of our staff had COVID last week. While they were still positive, they came in here Wednesday night at 7:30 to do the payroll until midnight. Had they not done that, there would have been no payroll last Friday for the town or the schools. So we can't put ourselves through that in the future again. We need to have a dedicated payroll person, and when you see the exhibit showing the amount of work they do every week, I think you'll concur. Item number four is simply an increase in job postings. Item number five is an increase in training and the additional employee. And item number six, new memberships and certifications. This department is going to be in training at least six months of the year to meet all of the municipal requirements for training. Are there any questions on this budget?
Yes, Mr. Gito, and then I have questions also.
It would seem to me from
That number of mine was 144.
It would seem to me, from a strategic perspective, that you would want this position in this office
Yes, sir.
rather than in the School Department, because if you're looking for the future, this person may very well take on some of the other responsibilities as other people move, move further on. So I would consider that in, in my deliberations.
Thank you, Lou. And we've had discussions with the Superintendent, I have, one-on-one. We're hoping to include the rest of the School Committee and in the, this board, to, to discuss how we pay for these things, to just have an open, honest discussion about how we pay for these things. Any other questions on Human Resources?
Yes, this is not about the person, but about the position itself. So on the, the school has a mirror image of, of this role. Can you explain to me, and this is because I don't have a copy of the org chart or the tasks that each position, their roles and responsibilities, so I'm asking out of, I know a little bit about what the Human Resource role does that we're proposing for the promotion, but I don't know everything. I, as a fact, I do know that on the school side, they have the mirror image. I don't understand why, if there are two identical, or not identical, but they're named the same, but they, the roles and responsibilities may not be identical. What is the difference? And why is most of the work on the municipal side if they have a mirror image? I just don't understand.
So the, I, I think the Superintendent would be a better judge of what they do than I am, but it's a relatively new organization, Human Resource Organization, I believe, in the school system. Up until then, I, the calls, the questions with regard to payroll, benefits, new hire information, healthcare, retirees, we, bi-weekly paychecks, hard copy or electronic, all came this way. So I know that the school is making some very wise strategic investments in Human Resources and in Wellness, and they've got a highly competent executive managing that department. I don't know what roles they're going to be able to pull internally, and that's why we're waiting to have that, that discussion between the two boards. If they take those services back, we don't need to hire a person. If they take, if they, if they don't take that person back, there's no way we can continue without a payroll person.
Thank you very much, Mr. Corower.
Through you, Madam Chairman, to the Town Manager, in all your other pages of increases, the 2024 salaries are here, but they're not here.
Say that again, Scott, if you don't mind.
In the, in the other increases for pay raises, the 2024 salary is usually in the line, and then there's a percentage
Yeah.
at the end. Is there a reason why this is blank?
It's, it's, it's one level above. It just, it came out wrong in the computer. If you look one cell above that.
Well, Scott, I can answer that question. See, if you look at the line below that, the current title of that position is Program Coordinator 1 and 96,133 in FY '24. Now, they're getting promoted to a new title that doesn't have anything in FY '24 because it's a new title, so that's why there's nothing there. So if you look at the line below it and compare it to the line above it, those are the two numbers you, you're looking at.
The first number is the Department Head, the person referring to. The second number is the Assistant.
I didn't want to assume it, I wanted to ask.
No, I'm glad you did. It confused me as well. Because it's a new position, there's no history
Right.
prior cells. I'm glad you pointed that out. Other questions?
Please continue.
Thank you.
Please continue.
Did you say there was a question?
No.
Okay.
No further questions, please proceed.
Thank you. The next account is Procurement, Procurement salaries. So you, you've got a, a, there's two yellow highlights. Lay it away, please.
Senior Clerk position. No new FTEs, but Senior Clerk is going to purchase a clerk.
Right. There are no new FTEs in this department because the purchasing position was budgeted last year, but we were unable to fill it. So those are the only two highlights. There's the Department Head, and there's the new Purchasing Person. So it's an increase of 17.1%, which is about $70,000. The goal of this individual, when we hire this person, is to save a half a million dollars from our top 30 vendors.
Mr. Coulter, I have a question. It just so happens, it's going to be, I'm going to use the HR Department as my point of reference, but when those two positions get a promotion, are they coming out of the union pool or, and then more leadership?
Absolutely. The, in HR, neither one of them are in a union, so, but your question is valid. In, in other positions that we're putting into management positions, our condition is they exit the union. They will be in a management position. So if that's approved, we will notify the union right away of them exiting the union.
Thank you.
For instance, the number, Craig, Craig, Craig. What number is Craig? Or number one, that person would be exiting the union on your chart in Section 4.
So they could decline the promotion?
They could.
Because they want to stay in the union?
They could. But this is a person that'll be put in a management position with multiple direct reports. It was very unusual. The former Town Accountant was in the union. I, I didn't understand it. The new Finance Manager will not be in the union. They'll be exiting the union. Good question. Any other questions?
Yes, Mr. Gito.
I'm curious about the $400,000 saving, and it's, I'm not, whatever, 500,000? And it's, I'm not, whatever, 500,000. We have centralized purchasing and we have purchasing through multi-town efforts. And so I'm not, I'm not questioning the, the salary piece here. I'm just, I, I don't understand how that strategy is going to work to get another half a million dollars savings.
I couldn't have written that question better, Lou. Thank you for that. So those town consortiums, I don't know who's listening, so I'm going to be kind. I've never found them useful. And in trying to convince our procurement officer to have a purchasing department, we decided to test two line items that we buy through a consortium. The first one was gasoline and the second one was salt. Both big ticket items. We saved 28% on gas by buying it directly and 12% on the salt by buying it outside the consortium. Two for two. Those are only the first two that we tested. And so the consortiums have not been very helpful to the town of Stoughton. Also, there is a cultural block in municipalities about purchasing. We get a price, we accept it, and we move forward. Today, we had a conference call with appraisers on two buildings we're getting appraisals for. And I said to them at the beginning of the call, they said, when do you want to do these? I said, well, we can't accept your prices. So if you can sharpen the pencil, we'll, we'll consider starting right away. And it's under $10,000, so we could do that without putting it out to bid. They, they had no issue, said, we're happy to do that. But we don't ask in municipalities. So we're going to go back to the top 30 vendors, which includes our health insurance, which is, you know, $15 million. It includes our liability insurance, which is $1.1 million. And we're going to put it out to bid. And we're going to ask for best and final prices. And the market is hungry. So I think 10%, I think $500,000 is a very conservative estimate. I've done it in the private sector my whole career. And another thing, we have, we have a very strong cash position. Very strong cash position. The town is becoming financially, financially strong. There are, there are contractors that would give you 3% if you paid them out of term within five days instead of 35 days. And we can do that under municipal law by using our cash position, but we don't ask. And so I'm trying to work with the culture within procurement to add on a dimension. Procurement is about making sure we do it legally. And Fran does an extraordinary job. Purchasing is make sure we buy it aggressively. And so with that two-headed monster, if you will, we'll do it legally and we'll save a half a million dollars. So the first two, Fran became convinced when we picked two line items to go out for bid, line items that we're buying through the consortium. And between the two of them, I'm going to say conservatively, we'll save $100,000 between those two line items. I'm glad you asked that, Lou.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Corower.
I, I had asked the previous town manager to do that, to go, go rogue. And why do we have to just fold into the suitcase and follow everybody else? I says, they'll bend. You're buying that much salt, they'll bend. And I'm glad that they listened. Thanks, Tom.
Well, thank you, Scott. I mean, Scott said to me a couple of months ago, why are we buying auto parts? We're their biggest customer. Why are we buying them at a retail store? When we can go directly to a distributor and buy it at a 30% discount? Because we can pay our bills on time. So that's, when I said to you in the introduction, there are many strategic new hires we're making, whether it be fleet management or communications, purchasing is the new one. It wasn't just because people feel they're working hard and they need staff. It's to make or save money. And that will differentiate us as a municipality. I really appreciate those questions. Next one would be, next category would be IT. Is that you, Mark?
Yeah.
Okay, Mark's got it.
All right, thank you, Tom. I know Tom's probably going to want to say some words on this, but I'll start off. The big change in this department is the IT director salary line goes up 13.9% from 107 and change to 122. As you know, Trish is the director of IT and she wears many hats. I mean, she's been a rock star in the assessors department. I'll give Tom some credit. He really noticed her talent that way and is utilizing it properly. And she's hitting it out of the park, as we, as you all know, with what she's accomplished this past year. So what we're doing is we're taking her $30,000 stipend, converting half of that to her base pay. And the other 15 will be staying in the assessors department. We will be hiring an assessor on July 1st. But obviously, when that new person's hired, they're going to need guidance for a period of time, months, six months, three months, whatever that may be, to get going. And they may need assistance for a little longer than that. Trish, I mean, you can call the stipend whatever it is, but she's really like a specialist, task person, if you want to call her that. Any little task you, you give her, she gets done and she gets it done well. So it's, it's not, you can, we're putting it on paper that way. But after that assessor job is done, I'm sure there's going to be another task we'll put her on. And she just hits it out of the park. She's very, very due diligent, very, works very hard and gets it done.
I agree with Mark completely. The, the, so the increase on the budget is zero. There's a $30,000 stipend for this particular assignment. There will be others in the future, both big and magnificently sized projects. If a department head leaves suddenly, we are going to assign Trish to that department. There is nothing she can't assimilate and learn and manage with her management skills immediately. So when this happens, we're not increasing her base without decreasing the stipend. So we're reducing the stipend by 15 grand and just simply adding that to the base pay for a job description that has changed dramatically in the past year. She runs IT, she runs assessing, and whatever next department head opens up, she'll be assigned to that department. Go ahead, Mark.
Okay. If there's any questions on IT, I'll move on. All right, moving on.
I'd like to ask you a question offline, if you don't mind.
Sure. Okay, Town Clerks Department.
Wait just one minute.
Yep.
There was a negative number for remove munis annual, munis cost annual fee. Can you explain, what was?
I know, it's right at the bottom here.
So munis, we want to use more munis, more features in munis, more modules within munis. This is in the IT budget? So I just, I just needed some more clair, clarity on that.
I'm glad you asked. We need to add that back in, subject to our negotiation with the schools on shared costs. That should not have been changed. Thank you for pointing that out.
Thank you so much.
That is the shared, what the line item is, is the protection, the protection system? Trish, where are we?
No, just the regular service.
For munis that we all use, but 100% of it is in the town budget. It's $112,000, 112.
112, yep.
Yeah. But that should not have been in this presentation. So we're going to back that out and, and put 112 back into the budget. You get that note?
I get that note, okay. All right, moving on to the Clerks Department. The big, it was not, it's not a huge change, but the structure change is, we don't have a footnote for it, but it's your top two highlighted lines. We're changing the clerk public record title into a senior clerk title. So there's no change in FTEs. We just rolled that salary to the top line. So there's two senior clerk two positions. By having their additional staff member that was approved at the town meeting last year, Steph worked hard. She looked at her budget and said, well, now I don't need as many temporary wages in my budget. So she was able to reduce her budget down, which makes sense if you have another staff member in your budget from $40,000 to $32,500. So that whole, that whole salary lot, expense went up 3.8% with that, with that change. Going to expenses, the expenses pretty much minimal. Just looking at advertising and freight went up a bit from 2,500 to 3,000. Training went up to 4,000 to 5,000 due to the extra, extra staff person in that office. And the mailings went up from 8,000 to 9,500. The total budget went up 2.7%, which is, is minimal. Any questions? Okay. Moving on, Planning Department. No real changes in this department. It's 3.2%. One small change. The reason why you look at the town planner and the salary is not the 2.9% increase, like I told you, for the 26.1 pay periods, it's 4.6. The number in the FY24 budget was just, just wrong. It had 110,000. We had an agreement with the town planner for slightly higher than that, at 112 and change, I believe. And then when you add the two, two and a half percent on top of that, it becomes 115. Expenses, small change in expenses, dues and subscriptions went from 400 to 750. So the total increase in that budget is 3.2%, pretty minimal. Any questions? Okay. Moving on, Economic Development. Again, I'll start off with the expense side. Expense side, one change in the expense side that went up. It's the business app that Pam's created. It's been, been used a lot. Went from 8,000 to 86, 8, $8,682. That's a set price, it's contractual. The big change in this department is Pam's salary going from 92820 to 10320. So there's an $8,000 increase. Again, I think with, with what Mr. Coulter's seen in, in certain staff, he's able to see that, that Pam's time has been very well used with grant management, applying for grants. For example, she's recently landed that ADA grant. I can't remember through what agency, but, mass development. And then right before that, she landed the Community Compact Grant for the electric, electronic permitting for $200,000. She's very good at writing grants. I mean, probably the best we have and will have for a while, I think. She also manages the grants very well. So that's, that's something she's done casually through her job. But now, Mr. Coulter's really focusing on her applying for grants and more grants and managing grants, like the electricity program and things like that. So she's doing all her other duties and she's taking on a lot more grant duties. And, you know, just generally speaking, just the market conditions for somebody in her, in her position as a Director of Economic Development warrants an increase of at least $8,000.
May I, Mark?
Sure.
Two things I'd like to point out for this individual is, it's what we do common and, we commonly do. And, and it's not always sustainable long-term, but in the short term it works, meaning a few years. With what we're paying her, you would pay an Economic Development Director as the background information, the support documents will show. If we hired a grant manager, we'd pay that person that same salary. Pam is doing both. Now you ask yourself, well, can you do both? Is it working? She's brought in over $2 million in grants in the past several years. And on the electricity side, has saved Stoughton citizens $2 million in expenses on their electric bills. So that's a true quantifiable measurement. On the economic development side, during COVID, she provided such support to local businesses that may have otherwise gone out of business. There are some people that cross your path that do an enormous amount of work, but they don't say much. And then you look at the results, the measurables, and you say, wow, we should be appreciating that person more than we do. She does an extraordinary job. She's doing two jobs that both pay the salary that we're giving her for the first job. I think that's something we have to appreciate and recognize. I didn't recognize it until recently, once we started doing all the market research and the data is in your book. We're getting great value from money with this individual, even with this pay increase.
I just wanted to say for the record, I've seen Pam, I've observed her more on the economic development side. And I know she has a binder full of things she's ready to talk with all of us and you and roll out. She does a very good job with grant development because you have the numbers to prove that. So I'm glad you brought up both sides of what she does because she needs to be recognized for doing both. And that her title is Economic Development.
Right.
So that was a good thing. So thank you very much.
Madam Chair, I would like to second all of what you said.
That's wonderful. Thank you, Lou.
That's all we got.
So is police next?
Yeah, Police Department's next, yep.
All right, the next one is Police Department. The most dramatically changing department in the town. We've got two and a half new EFTs in this department with a lieutenant and with a sergeant. And we've got a very exciting program we just kicked off and the expenses shared between police and fire. And it's a wellness program, a wellness coordinator. A former police officer is heading it up and will be providing seminars and one-on-one instruction on how to eat, how to work out, seminars on personal finances and family finances, on stress management, on conflict resolution. And it's being very well received. We're working with the Y to get discounted members for police, for members of the police and fire. This position is being funded through the Fire Department and the Police Department equally. This person will be working all three shifts, coming in at, as shifts are changing to build the confidence and the relationships with the rank and file. And this person will report to Human Resources, will report to Diana, not to either of the chiefs. And there's a number of reasons studies have shown that that is the appropriate reporting structure. This is a new position. It's one that's fairly inexpensive, but should have a profound impact. I'm not at the liberty, and neither are the chiefs, to discuss some of the challenges that policemen and firemen and EMS medics have in this day and age. This is our way of getting out in front proactively to deal with those problems before they become out of control, as opposed to waiting until we're doing crisis management. So there are two and a half new FTEs. Now, on the other side, you'll see it later on in the budget, we're reducing dispatch from 10 to 1. So we're saving $900,000 in the dispatch by moving to Regional 911. That is how we're affording to add the positions that will so, will add so much value to who we are as an organization. The details on that, if you look at your footnotes, this is a lot of, of stuff. Union, item number one is the non-union salary adjustment due to the market. That is the personal, not the personal, the professional administrative executive assistant to the chief. She's not in the union. She handles all privileged information on cases, on payroll, et cetera. We were at risk of losing her this week. So again, we did the market analysis of surrounding people who are the assistants to the chief and found out that she, in fact, was right. We interviewed a woman last week for the purchasing position who is the assistant to a chief on the South Shore Town. Her current salary is 116. You can see the salary we're asking for that. There, it's a fraction of it. So that is a market adjustment that's fairly significant, but one that is consistent with the market. It's actually in the lower half of the market. And we would have lost this individual if we didn't make a promise that we would at least present it to the Finance Committee after the board passes their budget, assuming you include it. Item number two is a contractual Thia MOA longevity to the base. Item number three is a contractual increase. Item number four, as I said, is the 2.5 additional FTEs for Sergeant, Lieutenant, and, and Wellness Coordinator. Item number five is a billing system and software billing system for details, police details. Number six is the biggest increase. It's the new cadets in the academy. As you know, we're down 13 patrolmen. 13 patrolmen. That's, that's 20% of the, of our, of our command, of our staff. And it costs $4,500 a piece to put them through the academy. Item number seven. Item number seven, an increase in software. And item number eight would just inflationary increased costs. I know it's coming at you fast. We'll have plenty of time for other questions in the future. But do you have any questions right now? Do you find the yellow highlighted in footnotes helpful?
Yeah.
Good. Shall I move on? Thank you, Madam Chair. The next account are crossing guards. As you can see, there were 20 FTEs, 20 crossing guards. Those are the town employees that are staffing those positions. And I think it's pretty self-explanatory. Any questions on that? The next item are civilian dispatches. As you can see, we've reduced it from a total of 10 to 9. Percent change, yes, 9. And that's for our movement to Regional, I'm sorry?
10 to 1.
10 to 1, pardon me. That's as a result of our move to Regional 911 in Holbrook. As you may know, the police, excuse me, the fire moved over there two months ago. And the police will be moving over on February 1st. It will be left with one individual because, as you know, there's still a lot of activity of people walking in that dispatchers would handle during the business day. And so we'll keep one person onboard to handle the community outreach services. If there's no questions, I'll move on. Fire Department. If we'll go right to our notes and follow with me. Footnote number one is an increase due to additional events and the addition to contract rates for those events. Item number two is the increase for their share of the Wellness Coordinator. Item number three is due to a contract agreement of $500 per firefighter. And if I recall, item number three is a fitness, that's optional. So we may not spend that money. If they choose to take a fitness exam once a year, they get a stipend for taking and passing the physical fitness exam. The objective, of course, is part of the wellness program to incent them, to keep them healthy and strong. Item number four are the new contract rates. Item number five is for contractual. It's subject to appropriation up to $50,000. Item number six is a contractual increase. Item number seven is an increase in the overall cost. And item number eight are for small materials that we can't put through the capital budget. We put through the operating budgets like fire hoses, fixtures, smaller equipments that they have to replace all the time. Any immediate questions? We'll obviously answer detailed questions in the next meeting as well. Are we good?
All right. Next department's Building Department. There's several changes to this department. We'll start off from the top going down.
That's page 28.
Page 28, thank you. First line is the Building Commissioner. Line item, that salary is going up 9.8% from 101,975 to 111,975, 10,000. We've done a salary comp for that position. It's in your backup information, your blue binder for several towns. I mean, as you all know, our current Building Commissioner, very kind gentleman. He sits down with many people. He's inviting. He's pro-development friendly. Coming from the private sector, I've dealt with building commissioners in towns that are very difficult to deal with. A lot of them have a very big ego. They don't want to talk to you. And it's very difficult to even get in touch with them. Jack is the opposite of that. Very, very kind person, sits down, has a lot of meetings with everybody. He's now officially the ADA Coordinator in our town. He'll be helping manage that grant program that we have. He also goes to ZBA night meetings, you know, every Thursday night, at least once or twice a month. Comes in on weekends for calls through the Fire Department. You know, doesn't get overtime, doesn't get, you know, comp time, nothing like that. Just does his job and never asks for anything. It's my job as a manager of that department, being one of my departments, to recognize it and see that. Obviously, you don't just give people raises just to give people raises. You do, you start off with, I would never come to your board without a salary comp. You have that in your materials. It's lower than the average of several towns around us. It's very similar to the town planner position. If you lose a position like this, you're going to be hiring the next person at the salary or higher in this book that you see in front of you. We had the town planner at $100,000 salary. We had to hire the next town planner at 110 because two of the surrounding towns had a jobs posted at 105 and 108. The Building Commissioner, you could argue, is a higher-level position than the town planner, and it's just a little more. So that's why we're proposing Jack to get a $10,000 salary increase.
Mark, may I comment on that?
Sure.
Just a minor comment. And we've said it before, I'd like to just reinforce the point. The purchasing person is a great example of what Mark just talked about. That purchasing position for which we think we'll save a half a million dollars was in the budget for this year for FY '24. We missed the market with respect to what we had to pay for that person. And although we advertised this all the time, it's got zero applicants for that pay range. If we're right, that we're going to save a half a million dollars, we just lost out on $400,000 because we misplayed the market. We've had people come to us on staff, probably half the people on this list on the Section 4, that said, look, if I can't get a market wage, I have to leave. And my initial reaction was, you know, I'm so sorry, we can't make you happy, which was rather callous, until we got in the business of signing up the services to look at what the market is. It's shocking what it is. But you got a decision to make. Not you, I didn't mean it that way. We have a decision to make. We either let them walk, high-quality people, and pay more to recruit their replacement, or we get them to stay here. And I can tell you, one of our greatest strengths as an organization is we've been intact for a few years now. That's why this budget process has gone so differently this year. We're not changing people all the time. We've got labor harmony. We've got people who are being better trained every single day. And we're getting better results from every single department. So we don't want to get into the merry-go-round of having to change people out all the time because they're underpaid. And as you can see from our revenue forecast this week and from what we've saved in 911 and the structural deficits we've closed, we're raising the money to be able to pay a fair wage, to stable our workforce. If we were still in a structural deficit position, and I can't congratulate you all enough for the courage it took to do what you did to get us to break even, then we would not be able to make any investments in people and would have a constant flow of people leaving with their boxes going out the door because municipalities are finally beginning to pay people. One last point. In the day, people would go to municipalities not because they paid well, but because they had great benefits. Well, as you know, we just gave our employees a 50% increase in healthcare. So the value of our benefits, and we didn't change the ratio, 70/30. So the value of that benefit was reduced significantly. And therefore, they're not only looking at wages in other towns, they're looking at benefits in other towns, which you can monetize, monetize. And so the average employee was much more aware of what the market was than we were, until Deanna pointed to us that you folks better start looking at this. She's been talking about it for a long time, for the year I've been here. And we frankly were saying, yeah, 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 it's a great place to work. They're not going to leave. Well, they were leaving. And so that's why we're reacting with this section, page 4. It's more about retention than it is about recruitment right now. It's retention. We've got, within a 10-square mile of Stoughton, we've got five communities that don't have a town administrator, don't have a finance manager, don't have a town accountant, haven't started their budget process because they haven't been able to recruit their replacements. It's amazing.
Great.
Thank you, Mark.
Yeah, well said, Tom. All right, moving through this budget, going down. Number two highlighted line, Code Enforcement Manager. The previous Code Enforcement Manager left. We hired a new Code Enforcement Manager at a higher salary to be competitive with the market. And the budget reflects that change. Moving down, the third highlighted section, Deputy Inspector. That's the, when somebody's out, wiring inspector, plumbing inspector, building inspector, we do call in deputy inspectors. That line item, if you look at the actuals, that's not on the sheet, but the actuals are higher than 6650 to reflect what we actually use for that line. The Seals and Waits and Measures line is just one box highlighted because we actually, even though it's not an increase over 5%, it's a decrease of $7,000. But it's important because there was an agreement made with one of our employees. If they got a certification and become our Waits and Measures person, that the stipend of $7,000 would be rolled into their base pay. We're happy to announce that he got certified. He's our Waits and Measures person, Sean, and our Board of Health Department. So you'll see that that $7,000 is eliminated. It's rolled into his salary in the Board of Health Department. He's Board of Health slash Code Enforcement. His Code Enforcement duties are associated with Waits and Measures services. And then just a couple of small things. Longevity went up contractually 10% from 1,000 to 1,100. And travel expenses went up slightly to reflect the actual mileage used. Any questions on Building Department?
I have a question. Actually, it's more of a statement. The Deputy Wire Inspector and the Plumbing and Gas Inspector. You call us courageous, I'm going to be courageous. These two guys deserve a little bit more. I don't know where you're going to find it, but they're driving their own vehicles. And I see we have gas, oil, and grease is a zero. Vehicle fixing is a zero. So these guys are using their stuff. They sometimes have to go twice back to an inspection. So I don't think it's, I mean, it's a small increase, but I think you got to do a little bit better for them. To fill up their, I know one guy uses one truck. It's a diesel. The other guy's got a gas. And they're both, you know, one's at $70 filling up and the other guy's over 100. I'm not penalizing the town for it, but their insurance is protecting them while they're doing stuff for the town. So I don't think it's too much to ask to give them a little bit more so they can put it in their tank or a little bit more for what they're doing. They make Jack look good because Jack's out there doing it, and then they're covering the other end. So that's all I'm saying, is what's fair is fair. And I don't think this is fair, on just being out there and being honest.
I appreciate the feedback, Scott. And what we'll do is we'll actually look at other towns that have these positions, see if we can kind of see what they're paying. Because we certainly don't want to lose these people.
I'm going to tell you something. I don't need to know what other towns are doing. I want to know what we're doing. We just stepped outside the box and gave out raises that other towns aren't giving out. I'm agreeing with you because of what you showed me. I'm telling you what's out there. I know what we're pumping at the pump. I just put $660 in a 10-wheeler, and it was one tank.
So you'll see, Scott, and I agree with your point. So the cost of travel expenses going from 500 to $1,500 is for that exact reason. We allow them to take their trucks and personal cars for inspections, which is a benefit. We were considering possibly making them take town cars, come in in the morning, take the town car, go do your inspections and come back. But we want to give them flexibility. We know they're professionals, and that's a benefit. But the salary part, I think what I was referring to is we just want to follow the same process that we do with all these other raises. Instead of just putting a number on there, we'll go through, we'll look at what other towns have. And if it warrants an increase, we certainly will give an increase.
I've been watching the increase on these two positions, and it hasn't jumped. It hasn't spiked. And it's something to look at. I know it doesn't seem like much, but I think we can find it. Otherwise, I'll find it. You won't like where I find it from. So take that under you. You said you weren't going to get offended if we asked questions. Now, I don't want to bang heads. I'm just telling you, these two guys, whether they were women or men, I would fight the same way.
I don't think there's any department head or manager in this department that would go against the Select Board endorsing giving some of their employees more money.
Exactly.
So...
We agree with you.
Yeah.
And I'm not a spender, believe me.
Okay, we'll take a look at that, Scott. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that's Building Department in a nutshell. Any other questions? Okay. Okay, moving on. Animal Control. You want to take this one?
Animal Control. Animal Control for FY '25 is, I'm doing this with memory. I don't have it in front of me, is 2.5%. But mid-year, we had to increase that price. That was actually a notice to leave. And when we looked at her hours, she's working seven days a week. She's called out at all hours of the night. We're getting great value for what she does. She's the only one in the department, so there's nobody else to take the beeper. So again, you look at the value versus other communities. We're getting good value. That's all I can say. But this is not an increase in FY '25. It was an increase in the current year that was unbudgeted, where we would have lost the employee. The increase moving forward is 2.5 COLA. Does that cover it?
Covers it, yep. Simple department. Okay, if there's no other questions, we'll move on to Engineering. All right.
Scott, he'll be looking for major increases from you in this one.
Here we go. Okay. All right, there's three highlighted. You guys killed me. All right. Three highlighted lines in this budget. The first line, first yellow line is Assistant Director of Development Services slash Assistant Town Engineer, planning, kind of planning for the future, mimicking what's happening now in reality. Craig Horstfall, our Assistant Town Engineer, not Assistant Director of Development Services, is my number-two person in everything I do, not just engineering. He helped me out with some of the comps. He helped me out with annual reports. He helps me out with things that aren't just engineering-related with the budget. Day-to-day budget stuff with Kristen, he's working with her. Stuff that just a normal Assistant Town Engineer would not do. I would not be as successful, well, hopefully you think I'm successful, maybe you don't, but as I could be without Craig and people like Craig in my operation, Kristen, all the administrative help that we have. We've looked at Craig. Craig's, that title is actually very hard to find in other towns, right? It's probably there, but it's tough to get comps. So we looked at things like Assistant DPW Directors, Assistant Town Engineers, Assistant Directive Inspection Services, positions like that for comparisons. That's in your packet. You have comps on all that. It warrants Craig to get a $10,000 increase. Craig is a very skilled individual. He saves the town, I mean, just this week, we got a $38,000 grant. He's, Craig took the initiative to go forward and put in an application for a new Complete Streets prioritization plan for traffic stuff. That's one small example. He's managing the whole budget for the Park Street Sewer Project by himself, which is a bear of a project financially to manage, doing it to the T effortlessly. I could go on and on. I could talk a long time about Craig and how important he is to me, to this town, and to all our department heads, quite frankly.
Just to give you some perspective from someone not in engineering, I would say out of the last... out of the last twenty days, Mark has been in that conference room with me for ten hours a day doing this budget, and has not been in engineering. And that department, which I think you'd all agree, operates at a very high level, has not missed a beat. Now, that doesn't mean Mark isn't needed down there, but Mark has had to commit to the percentage that he spends as the assistant town manager, all in one month almost, and that place operates like a top because of Craig's contribution. So without that, Mark would not have been able to work side-by-side with me, providing this level of detail in this budget is related to Craig's performance.
Absolutely. Well said. And by the way, I still have good engineering skills. I'm a fine-tuned machine when it comes to engineering, so I haven't lost a step at all.
We know this.
He needs reinforcement.
You got the reinforcement.
Okay. Second highlighted line, super longevity, that's contractual through this.
Excuse me. We didn't say. Craig is number one in section four.
Oh, sorry.
You didn't see that yet.
Second highlighted line is super longevity, that's through spay out an employee's getting the super longevity for the next three years at five percent. That's what that line equates to. It's contractual. And then the final increase of over five percent, which is five-point-six, is the GIS operational expense. That's our software costs for the people, GIS software we utilize. Any questions in engineering?
Not a question, I guess a comment. I had mentioned to you and to Larry that I thought we should be looking at software that would allow us to sort of walk through projects that we might be developing. Because it would allow us to get buy-in or change in a project, to get buy-in for things that needed to be done. We spend a lot of time talking about things and getting to yes, or getting to maybe, or getting to, well, let's put it off till next year, more than we would spend to do some of the analysis that's necessary to get to yes. So I think that somewhere in the town budget, whether it's here, whether it's in the IT department, or somewhere else, we should get into the twenty-first century. And I say that in this area, I won't go back to any others, but I think you really need to give some thought to that. Because we waste more time, more people's time, in dealing with projects than we need to.
Right. I appreciate that comment, Mr. Gieto. You have mentioned that in the past, and I appreciate how into you are Larry's position. Mr. Gieto comes in quite often, sits with Larry, gets you educated on what Larry does, and it really makes Larry feel very important, because he's just a quiet person, he's, you know, he doesn't really come out of his office too much, and he appreciates your comments. Larry has brought our GIS into the twenty-second century. So our GIS is solid. What you're mentioning is a skill set that mostly an architectural firm or a landscape architecture firm has, but Larry, since you've mentioned that to him, he's willing to learn, and he learns a lot of different things, not necessarily in his job description. He's looked at our AutoCAD software. There's actually a module in AutoCAD that we have right now that a lot of architects utilize. I would welcome you to come in, because just this week, he showed me an addition that he put on to a future project that we may have coming on a capital plan soon, and what that would look like walking through the rooms. It's very basic at this point, but he's just learning it, and it's amazing. It almost looks like for some of you, younger kids, like walking through the rooms in Minecraft, that game, Minecraft. You know that, Steve? Yeah. So, and it's very cool. You should come in and take a look at it, but Larry's gonna need to get a lot more training to get that up to the next level, but I think he's willing to do it, so.
I'm advocating for product. I'm advocating for either contract work, Larry's work, or some help to be able to move us to a different level in being able to communicate and get to yes on the work that we're doing. So whether it's here, whether it's someplace else, I've talked with Larry, I don't wanna get into a long discussion about this. I'm just, this is an evening to give feedback, not to be a huge advocate for something, but I'm giving you some feedback that I think could be helpful to the town.
Thank you.
One light point I'd like to make is on technology is, Mark and I were interviewing appraisers today. We had three interviews, and one of the appraisers, we were talking about the state theater, and Mark had GIS up on the computer, and the other guy was looking at a map, the appraiser, and he was arguing with us, was one of the three, he was arguing with us what number of, which number apartment was each one. And the guy says, look, the map says this. Mark says, I'm looking at it right now. The guy says, you're in front of the building? He said, no. What year were you born? I'm looking at through GIS at the number of the door of the building. Oh, we can't compete with that. So we went to the next applicant. I don't think we're going with that guy.
That's twentieth century. It's not twenty-first century.
For me, it's Star Wars.
I know.
Lou, I wasn't gonna say anything, but you did, so that's good.
But imagine the appraiser didn't have it.
No, he didn't. Appraiser did not have it. Okay, so we'll move on to the next department if there's no other questions. Excuse me.
Eighty-seven, eighty-five years old. I'm begging you, Scott.
Please use your mic.
So I have a, this is about the timing and what you plan to discuss with us, the four-year capital plan. Are you still planning on doing that?
That's just a. Madam Chair, that's just a submittal for your review, so we're not gonna discuss it.
Okay. Thank you very much.
And we'll move along as fast as you like.
Yeah, we'll pick up the pace.
That's what she was saying very nicely, Mark.
Yes. All right. DPW general, highway and admin. Let's just cut to the chase. The overall percentage is a two-point-nine percent decrease. If you look at all the DPW departments together, you know, there's like five or six of them, I think, there's a point-four FTE change, and it's because he's moving some from water and sewer, I might have it wrong, but from his department to water and sewer, vice versa.
That's correct.
There's a point-four FTE change. So from that standpoint, there's no additional positions, there's nothing like that, other than in water and sewer, which is not part of public works.
Now, a question for the board, I'd love to get your feedback on this. As we were doing this budget, would you prefer to see one DPW budget, or do you prefer to see these six departments within DPW?
Funny you should ask that.
That's a great, great point.
I would prefer to see all six.
Okay.
Because to familiarize myself, but Mr. Carrera.
The only thing I would like to see is a section that gives, you get one person twenty percent in here, one in there. None of us wants to play that game.
We have a very nice spreadsheet for you. You'll have it at your next meeting.
That's all I'm looking for, because that's what I hear at town meetings, why do I gotta add thirty-five here?
So you'd be in favor of it all being in one budget?
In the real-life world, I don't see what the problem is, being in one budget. If it's DPW, it's DPW, that's the way it should be.
Okay.
I think. I mean, other people like to see it all broken up, but.
So perhaps not.
It isn't saying that you can't do it in sections, but it should be all under one.
So perhaps not at this meeting, so we don't get into a long discussion, but if the board could discuss that at a future meeting, this department took probably six iterations of the budget, because there are so many shared resources between them. This one took more time than any other budget combined. So if you could have that discussion, if you want the level of detail, it's done, but it's a policy question. I don't know how the finance committee wants to see it, but it's a lot of work, and nobody wants to look at the point-two, point-five, point-seven labor. But that's how DPW runs, is they share labor all the time. You know, you may be removing trash today and plowing roads tomorrow, and fixing a road the third day. So trying to allocate labor is a guess at best.
So to clarify, I think, I'm not sure if you all understood that, there's five or six public works departments, right? Different divisions, highway, parks.
Snow.
Snow. So what Mr. Cult is proposing for consideration is combining all those to one public works department. And then you'll have a position, and you'll know exactly what the salary is, and there'll be one FTE there, as opposed to trying to find point-two, point-one, point-three, point-five in five or six different departments. So something to consider. I think it's a good consideration, so.
I think that's a good consideration. I believe that we should, for this first wave, and it's really your first budget, right?
Second.
The first one was developed by somebody else, right?
The first one, I arrived two weeks before it was due.
Right.
And then I threw chaos into the process.
Oh.
And this is the first constructive impact on the budget.
So for that reason, that's why it's, not that other, not the negative part, but because it's really.
Remember we were gonna defer capital spending to pay for healthcare?
Yes.
That didn't go over well.
Okay, so if there's no questions on that particular one department of public works called highway admin, we'll move to the next one. Highway construction, again, another public works department. Total increase in that department is minimal, four-point-eight percent, mostly due to the cost of police details contractually going up. And Paul was a forethinker on this when he was looking at his budget, the street signs and post line has gone up. There's so many times where we have little design projects that come in front of your board, you approve it, and then usually it's one of the things you give to me. I go give it to Paul, and Paul's like, I never accounted for this in my budget, and I just tell him to try to figure it out, and he's usually pulling strings to get it to work. So he's increased the street sign and posts line from twenty-two thousand to thirty-five thousand. Okay, if there's no questions on that one, we'll move to the next public works department, which is facilities. Facilities went up a total of four-point-seven percent, which is minimal overall. The big, one of the larger changes in this department is just a restructure of a position, no new changes in FTEs or anything like that, but the fleet manager slash facilities director is now gonna be more of a facilities director slash fleet manager. So the FTEs got changed accordingly to reflect that. You'll see point-seven-five FTEs in facilities, and then point-two-five FTEs in another, oh, in the fleet department. That's the larger structural change in that department. Most of the other items under expenses have gone up due to just costs, cost increases are being underbudgeted the previous year. Things like gas, water, building repairs and services, things of that nature. Any questions on facilities?
I don't know why you put facilities and fleet manager together. The fleet manager should've been probably a head mechanic who understands trucks, understands the equipment. I don't know what a guy who's gonna figure out if you need new steps on one of the public works buildings, or roof on one of the sheds, or something like that, is gonna know about trucks. I just can't believe those two are not together. I don't know who you're gonna try to make it be, but it belongs with a mechanic, a guy who's gonna buy the filters, set up the fleet the way it is. This is a bad, bad move. That's all I'm gonna tell you.
Combining them? Yeah, having both of them in one, yeah.
I'm not trying to be funny here, but you're right, we need both positions, we just couldn't afford it. And I'm not trying to be funny, we got you, and you've been giving us the guidance we need on the fleet side, and you're free. So, and we got Joe on that side as well, so they should double your pay for what you do with the fleet. But our facilities right now, this building looks beautiful, and we're doing the preventive maintenance to make sure that we don't have big insurance claims, but there are things that we're just not getting to. By way of example, that sprinkler head blew and destroyed this building last January third. The only one they're fixed is that one. These sprinkler heads are still the old ones. So we're at risk of it happening again. It's just a matter of getting to it. So I sleep thinking about that so many nights, but I hear your point, Scott. We do need both, and they're separate jobs.
I'm just saying, you got three guys working as mechanics, one of them must have a little something on the ball.
Yeah.
That could handle the fleet in.
That's a pretty good point.
Stipend, whatever, but the facilities guy might be like somebody else who could be a craftsman, or who's got some, or you get somebody part-time.
So would you, last question I'll ask, would you be satisfied if we chose the head mechanic, we're both talking about the same person, I'm sure, in consider a stipend for him to be responsible for the fleet management duties?
Yep.
Is that what you're suggesting?
I think that's where it's gotta lie.
Okay.
Because he's gonna know, you know, what's he gonna go talk to the facilities guy and say, oh, by the way, put that window to the side, we gotta go talk about a rear end in the truck.
Okay.
And we shouldn't really be buying these trucks because they're bad rear ends. They're not gonna know that.
Give that person.
He's gonna know it. He's gonna get that A S T M blurt on his thing, and he's gonna know it.
I think that makes sense.
Thank you.
Mr. McCrisky?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanna concur with Mr. Carrera, Tom, that the head mechanic that you have there now is outstanding. It has been long overdue in the town of Stoughton, and in my world, that's what I do, is going and look at fleet operations and rebuild them basically from the ground up, as you know. And work that we primarily sent out to subcontractors and paid exorbitant amounts of money to do what we're now doing in-house. Scott understands, you know, when you're pulling rear ends out of a truck, and they basically had a truck with its whole rear suspension out and tipped upside down rebuilding it, we sent to dealers or, you know, subcontractors, and we paid probably twice as much, you know? And the work they're doing, adding snowplows to and attachments to brand-new trucks, saves us that rate from a dealer, you know? And so the things that they're doing there, that I've seen with my own two eyes, lightening up gross vehicle weights by going from heavy steel wheels to aluminum wheels, you know, and, you know, it's gonna improve mileage, you know, fuel mileage as well by lighting the truck up. So we've never done that in Stoughton before. Scott can back that up. And these gentlemen, the welders that they're using and so forth, have just been phenomenal. So I don't mind, and I think a fleet manager needs to know what a fleet is, needs to know these things, and the person we have doing the buildings is without a doubt the best we've had, you know, and he's done a remarkable job since he has started here. I don't wanna see those two positions merge. That's me personally, that's up to you. You know, it's your budget, and you have the authority to change around and assign these things, but I just think with something like that, it's just, it's night and day, you know? So that's just my thoughts. Thank you.
All right, great comments. Okay. Any other questions, facilities?
Madam Chair, we're getting to the end because the last half a dozen, or eight or ten items are part of joint costs, so we're not covering them.
Right.
So we are getting to the end.
We're close.
We're going down to the last one. We're going down to the last one, the community events.
Next department, Snow Removal. Cost stayed flat, 0% increase, no changes. Any questions? Okay. Moving on to Street Lighting. This department went up 21% pretty much due to underbudgeded previous years and costs with pole replacements. We have a new pole replacement policy, well, not policy, but program. And Paul's beginning more aggressive with it. Am I sure if you have more detail on that?
I do, actually. With every pole that we replace, Assistant Chief Maycom is gonna give a report at a future meeting as to where we are on the double poles that are in town. He's the project manager for it. With every pole that we place, we have to, we, the town, have to change over all of the fire boxes and all of the low voltage wires. The utility doesn't do that. So for every pole, there's expense associated with changing over the fiber and the low voltage wires. And there's a major push by Verizon to replace poles. So with every pole they replace, we have expense.
Yep. Thanks, Tom.
Thanks.
Could I ask a question about, just very briefly? This is 2023. Why do we have wires for fire? Why don't we use wireless?
It's, we could, I guess. It's replacing the fire boxes. As they take it off one pole, I don't know the technology.
Who has used one in the last 20 years?
But.
The. No more discussion now.
And it may be wireless, I don't know, but when they take the old pole away, we have to move the box over to the new pole.
Right. Okay. All right, we're on the street lighting. Any other questions on street lighting? Okay. Moving on, we're at Fleet Maintenance. Overall, department went up 2.4% minimal. The larger change on that would be, okay, we had footnote one. The laborer, we are promoting to a certified welder. Therefore, there's a salary adjustment needed for that. No new FTEs, just a salary adjustment. It's 42,965 to 55,000. Footnote two, the Program Admin. This was just a change of FTEs from one department to another. There's no new position there. It's just an overall allocation. Again, if you had an overall DPW budget, you could add up the FTEs a little easier than trying to see where the remaining FTEs are here. Footnote three, Vehicle Maintenance and Operational Services. Increase of costs in in-house repairs went from 85,000 to 110. And if I'm hearing the board, at least two of the board members, but we'll see what the rest of you have to say, we may add a stipend in this budget to account for Fleet Manager.
Fleet Manager.
Fleet Manager.
I agree with those two. So if you're wanting, if you're looking for support.
Thank you. Moving on, another Public Works Department. We're on our sixth one now.
Right.
Sixth Public Works Department. Okay. Waste Disposal Sanitation. This may be a department we want to keep separating, even when we combine the other ones, just to kind of monitor it, right?
I agree.
So this department is minus 4.4%. There are some highlighted lines. If you'd like me to get involved with those lines, I can. But the whole department went down 4.4%. Are there any questions with Waste Disposal slash Sanitation? Okay. Okay, moving on. Humans, Human Services is gone, right?
Yep.
Okay, Board of Health. The one changed this department, we noted previously in another department, Building Department. We had somebody become certified as a weights and measures person. We took their, we added the 7,000 to their base salary and we split it between, I'm sorry, Assistant Sanitary and Code Enforcement. Half of the salaries paid out of the Board of Health revolving account for the Board of Health duties. The other half is through the general budget because they're not, they don't qualify for Board of Health funds. So that's a 13.5% increase for that salary. That's it for Board of Health. Any questions? Yep.
For the Code Enforcement, a couple of meetings ago, we talked about things that were going on with parking, illegal parking and so forth and so on, right? And we talked about the need for more Code Enforcement officers. Have you considered that or what is your strategy to try to resolve that issue? Because we also said that's not the, it's not gonna be a task that's gonna be assigned to the Police Department. It's Code Enforcement. So can you share a little bit more about your thought with that?
Sure. Let's separate Code Enforcement, for sake of clarity, from Parking Enforcement. On the Code Enforcement, we are calling Matt out less and less so that he can go back to being a Code Enforcement Officer. But there is some egregious mismanagement of waste. Joe's got a picture of a few that he called in this week that Matt will be called out for. But the education is working. There are fewer egregious code violations with respect to rubbish. So he's slowly integrating into traditional Code Enforcement and he'll come out when there's an egregious violation of the new rubbish bylaw, the beautification bylaw. On the Parking situation, the Police Department, until we get the person on board, has been working diligently. We've tripled the amount of tagging of cars, particularly in the train station. What we're not getting to until we get the person on board are the outer limits of the town, particularly where tractor trailers are parked on the side of the road. So we're committed to getting somebody. Once again, we advertise that at a very non-competitive rate. We just talked today considering increasing the rate to see if we get more applicants for the job. We hope to have that person on board very soon. That's in this budget.
Yes, Mr. McCrisky?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tom, just to, you know, to mention again that I know that Matt's doing a great job and I did actually reach out to Mark earlier and to ask him to thank Matt for what was probably two one-ton dump trucks of trash, used clothing at a bin that is mismanaged by the property owner. And there was two of them today. So I would have said actually, very easy, Scott, three one-ton dumps, load it up. I mean, I mean, load it up. I'll show you the picture before we leave. And there's a lot of that going on. And I think we need to, our Code Enforcement, I've said before, I believe we should have two. I really do. I mean, there are people that are moving into homes in town, in residential neighborhoods with way too many people occupying the homes. I mean, when you have a little cape that has five cars in the driveway, you know, that there's a lot of people living there. Commercial vehicles, we've talked about that as well. Tom Manager mentioned it, which is good that we're doing that. But people over utilizing properties and running commercial businesses out of their homes in residential neighborhoods. And Matt can't do it all, you know. And as I've said, and this goes back to 2015, is that the integrity of our community is really taking a beating because we, now that then, and Mark was, it was a little before Mark started, but when we got water in 2003, many people didn't know, wouldn't know is that we had a policy that if somebody needed additional water to build out on a business or take more people in a home, they had to save four gallons for every one that they want and you couldn't do it. You know, it just was next to impossible. They went through the schools, they replaced toilets, urinals, everything they could do to get the water usage down. And we're still at that point now where people are coming in with that water. We can do almost whatever we want now. And renters, we know renters. We talk about parking, Pleasant Streets 1, you know, and people, the renters that are coming in, doing their cleanouts and so forth, that's gonna be a lot of work for any person just on that, just on the trash program. And I don't want to see us really stumble by using Matt too much, that we can't get out into the field and get into the neighborhoods. And, you know, I've had people say, "So what do you want to do? Start telling residents they can't do this and can't do that?" No, I'm gonna tell residents that we have regulations and we have bylaws that are in effect for their safety as well. So that, God forbid, there's a house fire, you know, you're not trying to get 10 people out of the cellar. You don't have somebody living in an illegal in-law apartment, which we've still find, that we're done without proper building codes, you know. And that's where I'd like to be focusing on because it's, if we don't grab control of that in a demanding way, we're just gonna get people to continue to come in here and not listen to the rules. You know, parking, we can do a lot better still. And I, you know, I'll say, at least we're doing something, Tom, and I agree with you. We've made a difference. But the train station isn't the priority if, you know, I mean, when it all comes down to it, it's parking within 25 feet of an intersection. You know, cars parked on both sides. My own street, I've called because people park on both sides of the street. They block off so a fire truck couldn't even get down the street or an ambulance. So I become, you know, the neighborhood mad dog and they don't like it, but I'm like, "Hey, it could be your family that needs a fire truck." You know, and, but that's what we're doing and it's on a regular basis. And I would challenge anyone, you know, if you want to take a ride, give me an hour of your time and I'll open your eyes. I mean, it's, we do have to increase that. So again, I know that, you know, we can't get everything. We have to, you know, we have to go with where we've gotta go. I've said it before, and working together, your team, Mark, and everybody working for you, I mean, there's, I can't say that enough that in the accomplishments that have taken place under the Town Hall and staff in the last year have been phenomenal. I mean, you know, and I'll say it here, that I've said it before, Kingston's loss was our gain. And, you know, what you've found and how you've addressed it and the things that you've accomplished in your last year are just, my congratulations. So I'd like to just get a little bit more on the Code Enforcement.
So Joe, just to assure you, it is in the budget and we will, as soon as we can get that person, I'll be the first to introduce you. We'll get them on board as soon as.
And maybe I'll resign from the board for six months, then I'll take the job.
You'd be good at it.
Oh, I'd be writing some tickets, I'll tell you.
The next one. The next one, Madam Chair, if there's no questions, is the Council on Aging. It's really very simple. We remember our old friend, Janice Bruce. She's the part-time manager of the COA and in a very short time, demand for transportation and programs have skyrocketed. So we have decreased the amount of part-time drivers, increased the amount of full-time drivers. That's the really only change to this budget. But the good news is, as we keep talking about hiring problems, Janice was able to hire the additional full-time driver right away. Our calls for transportation of seniors has increased double-digit percentage. I wouldn't speculate what it is right now, but that's why we had to hire the full-time driver for this budget. So those are the only two changes in this. Programs are picking up, transportation's picking up. Janice is doing a great job. And the program coordinator, who's young and training under Janice, working part-time and this department's moving in the right direction. Are there any questions? The next one is Veterans Services. The overall budget, as you'll note, is down 11%. We've changed the model. When Sean resigned mid-year, we promoted his assistant, who is not a veteran, to be the department head and we hired a part-time veteran to meet our statutory obligations. You'll see a note down here. The state is changing its determinations on who can be a Vets Agent from part-time to full-time. May not happen in this fiscal year, but I just wanted to note that if that happens, we'll have to increase the part-time to full-time. We're budgeting the way the law is written now, which is part-time. If the law does change and that doesn't happen quickly, we'll have to adjust to that accordingly. Other than that, the department is moving along very well and again, at 11% less expense than previously. If there's no questions, we'll move on to Substance Abuse and Prevention. The department head, you can see her salary over there. Everybody else, all other labor is grant-funded, so it's not going through our budget. This is one of the departments we're gonna look very closely at. We're not doing enough to reach the kids that need our help. There was a lot of time spent managing grant-paid, part-time people, as many as 20. And so we were spending all of our time on management and not enough time on counseling or outreach or production to school-aged children. So we've got to make some major changes in this department. We have cut some substantial costs that were not counted, or we have placed them under grant funding, put it that way. So the overall reduction is down 5.5%. But I think you'll see some major changes in this department this year. We're now getting to these smaller departments and figuring out where they're adding value. Any changes on this? Substance Abuse and Prevention. Next one is the Library. If you don't want me to, I won't go through all the footnotes. I do want to say to you, there's two increases. One is in Section 4, number, Section 4, number, where's the library? Oh, those are new FTEs. I'm sorry. Under the increases is, I think, Section 5, isn't it? Do you have any second, please? Section 4, number 3, that individual is the department head. We're recommending a above-average increase for him. He is among one of the best managers we have in the town. We have no problems that come from that organization and it's not because problems don't walk through their front door. The way he handles it is masterful. The way he manages his staff is masterful. Most of the other changes are all contract-driven. If you want me to go through the categories, I will, but that is the most significant change. In addition to their outreach communications person was grant-funded last year, so you're seeing it as a new expense, it's because it's not grant-funded this year. Those are the two major changes. Are there any questions on the Library? The next category is the Historical Commission. No changes really. It's the smallest budget on the list. Section after that is Recreation. Walking you through the points, they're very important. Number, number one is the market adjustment for the department manager and he's number seven on Section 4 of your handout. And that, there's a very clear market analysis attached to that recommendation. Number two is an increase due to market conditions and that is the Exceptional Children's Program. It's an outstanding program, but we're having to pay more, just like number three. Number three is an increase in hours from 24 to 28 due to the demand of more counselors. There are more and more children, school-aged children, walking into the library every day looking not only for books, but for programming and for counseling. That's good news that we can meet that demand. I view that as the same as the VNA. It's an increased expense, but it's an increased, improved service. And number four is fairly expensive. That's increased the level of care to the fields that the Recreation Department manages. Instead of fertilizing once a year, they're fertilizing twice a year and they're upgrading the irrigation system on those fields. I look at that as just investment in the town assets and it looks like healthier fields that the kids are playing on. Are there any questions on Recreation? Are there any questions on recreation? The next one is the parks department. I'll go through the footnotes very quickly. That, number one, is the increase due to onsite vendors from two to four hours. Number two is increased to the new rate structure in long, in longer events. They're going from two hours to four hours. And that's it for footnotes. Where's three and four? We're looking at parks. I, I, I'm so sorry. We've moved on to parks, 650, bear with me. No longer proportionally allocated to sanitation, so that was a reallocation of expense. Number two, a reallocation of employee to effect, actual time spent in that recreation of this parks department. So both those first two are reallocations. Number three are rentals to replace the auction equipment. And number four is replacement of small equipment needed to maintain the parks. And there will be in your packet what that small equipment is and what it costs. It's too small to be in the capital budget. Any events on that, any questions on that one? Under community events, item number one, increase due to onsite vendors from two to four hours. That's the one I was misreading earlier. And the next one is the increase in our own Stoughton police details. They've gone up substantially, and we need to look at it because we increased them because of the amount of work done by the major utilities and failed to make any concessions for churches, nonprofits, and our own town events. So Donna and I are looking at those details. There were some events that would be canceled if they have to pay these new detailed rates, but the utilities don't flinch on those rates. So that's it. The next section, retirement, is going to be capital captured in our joint cost presentation in two weeks. That's, that's all of the operating expenses. Oh, do you want to do enterprise funds? I'm sorry. We'll go to enterprise funds before we, before we leave. Thank you, Mary Jane. You want to do one, I'll do the other? I'll do VNA.
All right. Sewer enterprise account, Department 440, a lot of highlighted lines. Overall increase in the department is 2.4, I'm sorry, is 0.8%. Expenses went up 2.4% and salaries went up 2.9%. Somehow that equates to 0.8%, but, there must be a math there right here. Oh, thank you. See? This is, this is why we have Mary Jane over here. She's definitely a lot smarter than I, than Tom and I with this kind of stuff, right?
Us old guys are getting tired.
So it's a 2.1% increase, so nominal increase in that department. Mostly reallocation of FTEs, things of that nature.
One new position for assistant superintendent.
One new position for the water super, no, that's not in this department, that's in the other department.
Oh, this is sewer.
This is sewer, yep. No, no new positions in this department. All right, so there is a new position. It's split with water and sewer, but it's minimal in this department. It's a point, 0.3 FTEs in this department, it's 0.7 in water. Correct?
Yes, correct.
So one new position, split between water and sewer.
Mm-hmm.
That's the, that's probably the largest change in this department.
It is.
Concur.
Yep. We increased the others, but they're small dollars.
Overall, the department went up again 2.1%. Water department, Department 450, 60, page 65. Again, that one new position is 0.7 FTEs in this department, split with 0.3 FTEs in the sewer department. Everything else has pretty much gone up contractually, all the cost of, of services.
One thing I'd like to point out to the members is, we've got our first quarter billing information, and best we can see right now is the increase to water and sewer, particularly water, we've got that early data, is tracking right on to get us above the break-even. So the assumptions seem to be falling into place with how we did that pricing. The other good news is the assistant water superintendent is something we should have done a year ago. The person will have all the certifications needed, so if Phil gets sick or goes on vacation, we still have that strong management person to backfill.
It's water and sewer department. Any questions on water and sewer? Okay.
What page is VNA?
68.
68, thank you. I can do this very quickly, but it's a good news story. We met with VNA consultant today. We're moving to a, a consultant to do the billing for VNA effective July 1st. We need to add that consult in, consulting in here. It'll be a net zero difference because we're going to remove a category that has $15,000 in it that we haven't used in years. So it'll be a zero increase to the budget. I'll be, I'll be brief because you're not looking for an operating review of the VNA. This department is, is going to be rebranded, or we're recommending that it be rebranded. We're going to do external billing with professionals that know how, where all the loopholes are in Medicare and, and private insurance companies. By way of example, last year, they billed $528,000 and collected $320,000. And that's all in the art of billing and coding. So to add $20,000 to the budget and increase what we collect to maybe 80%, we'll make $180,000. So we're going to rebrand because people think we're just a, a Stoughton organization and that we're a public health commission that does things for free. So our vendors aren't getting the right message about us. So this is a department we're going to completely reorganize and, and turn a profit one way or the other. The other thing we're talking about doing is signing municipal agreements with neighboring towns like Avon. We're meeting with their town administrator next week, whereas they pay us a fixed fee for, for all of the administrative backroom costs that we have, and then we provide our visiting nurses and, and physical therapists to folks from Avon at that rate. The objective is to get more volume, to collect all of our billings, and, and to maintain the quality of service that these people provide. So this is going to be a very different business in fiscal '25, and we're using the remaining time in fiscal '24 to fine-tune how we're going to reorganize it administratively, financially, branding, the whole deal. This is now a priority, the next, the next mountain to climb. Yeah, I think you'll be very pleased with the way this turns out in FY '25. That's it for the operating expenses and the enterprise funds. I hope it was informative. I look forward to your questions next meeting when we're going to do ex, oh, you're killing me, Mary Jane. I'm trying to wrap up here. Cedar Hill, there's virtually no changes, or very few. What page is that? We had them at, good night.
Did you do that? Right. Cedar Hill, just go from the top down, yellow lines. The general manager.
2.5.
General manager, the salary's $85,000, going to 95,066?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay.
2.5.
Yeah.
2.5%.
Okay, so I'll make, we'll make that edit.
So that number is incorrect?
It's incorrect.
It must be. He's not on the, he's not on the, uh, section four increases for this budget. So he would be getting a 2.5%.
Yep.
I'm, I'm okay with that.
I knew you would be.
Okay. Going down, skip number two, it's a small cost. Credit card fees went up from $14,000 to $19,000. Is that based on volume?
That's on volume.
Volume associated. Irrigation supply going from $4,000 to $6,000, just pretty much from, from a cost standpoint, increase in, in prices. Pro shop merchandise, he's going from $10,000 to $12,000. Let's see what he's got for a footnote there. I think that's still a cost increase, cost increase on merchandise. Grounds maintenance and supplies, same, same logic, $10,000 to $11,000. Same thing with gas, chemicals, and the dues and subscriptions. All the costs have gone up. Overall increase in the department went up 6, 6.2%. And that includes that, that increase in the salary that will be reduced.
And the, the revenues are up by double digits.
Revenues are up by double digits this year?
Yes, they are.
Very good.
It's a very, it's a very healthy enterprise fund. So their retained earnings, even without doing small capital investments, will substantially increase in FY '24 and FY '25. Now, does that wrap it up, Mary Jane?
Out table?
That's nothing. At no sense.
Don't have that.
It's, no change.
I, I'd give us a, probably an A for the first 80%, and then we, we C minus. Same C minus for the last 20%.
We're getting tired. That's it, Madam Chair.
That's it? So we'll revisit this. I guess you'll update this version and give us a new version, and we'll review, and then look at the-
My chair is on.
Oh, my, my mic is on, yes. You'll give us another version with the updates for our next session, and that will be considered session two. In the meantime, you, we're to look at the job descriptions, the org chart, the hiring policy.
And they're all on the thumb drive and in high copy.
And joint costs, we're going to discuss on December 19th. All right.
Thank you for your patience.
Thank you very much. So we'll move to our next session. As we transition, uh, Mary Jane, did you have that information? Thank you very much, Mary Jane. So we'll move right along to our next agenda item, which is number seven, to discuss, consider and discuss town manager contractual compensation and remuneration for calendar year 2023. So, as most of you recall, we recently had Tom's performance review evaluation, and his final results were very good, where he was very high. So it's now time for us to consider if we are to give him a, increase his compensation. Currently, he's at $193,800 per year. I did also ask Jill to, to pass out his contract, so you could take a look at that, and I think it was on page, page four of 10, had the salary at that time, but that number has changed, of course. Also, if we want to consider to give Tom a bonus, or incentive is another way of saying a bonus. As an FYI, when, when Robin was here, the previous town manager, her increase was $7,000, that's fiscal year '22, it was $7,000. So those are just data points if, for consideration. And I know Tom said, um, at, tonight, that he wouldn't accept a bonus except for, okay. It's cost of living.
Madam Chair, I, I won't, I won't accept a salary, increase-based salary increase at this, in the contract, which I didn't draft. In the contract, salary is different from FY '23 incentive bonus. That's purely discretionary on your part. The, the pay increase, I prefer not to do as we're trying to hold salaries down. The bonus increase, I'd certainly be appreciative for the, but that's for the year in review, not for future years. For fiscal 20, uh, for calendar '23. Bonus is different than salary. Bonus is one time, salary is base.
Mr. Coulter? So it is, it's not worth a discussion, but Mr., Mr. Carrera, I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm going to abstain from this section because I, I abstained from setting his salary on the contract prior before. I had, I was okay to do his evaluation, but I, I will not be, um, you know, partaking in a bonus or whatever is that, all right?
All right. Mr. McCrisky?
Madam Chair, what was the documented bonus that was provided to Dr. Grimm when she was our town manager? Did you say $7,000?
Yes. Yes, and I, um, Mary Jane, would you like to confirm that number?
Okay. Well, I'm ready to make a motion when anybody's ready, so if you, if you-
Okay. Please make a motion.
Okay, Madam Chair, did I make a motion that Tom's Coulter be given a $7,000 bonus for calendar year 2023? In recognition of the outstanding work that he has done in getting our budget, getting our deficits under control, that was not his, uh, his doing. He, he found that when he got here. Providing exceptional leadership and bringing together, you know, our town hall staff, our town, I must say, town employees, um, you know, in, in just contributing way beyond what we've seen them do before. And that's all leadership that starts with the town manager. Tom's came, has come in here, and in a year's time, has cleaned up a mess. Cleaned up a mess. I mean, right off the top that we know, you know, water, sewer, trash, $3 million that we didn't know about. The insurance issue that fell apart, and we had a room full of teachers and town employees, you know, looking for heads, but made it through and got it done, you know, and some of the other things, you know, let's say the dispatch, you know, I mean, savings there, you know? And I think that Mr. Coulter has proven himself beyond any reasonable doubt if people look at the facts. And so that is the reason of my motion.
For discussion, Vice Chair.
Just for, for this purpose of further discussion, I, yeah, I support the motion. I'm going to vote in favor of it. But what I'd like to add is that, um, our town has had a good leadership for, for a little while, and, but it hasn't had exceptional leadership until kind of recently. I think that a lot of that comes from the experience that we've seen with Mr. Coulter, that, um, he has, he has praised our courage, and I, I always like to hear good things about myself, but on the one hand, on the other hand, one of the things that we have lacked in the past is people who are willing to tell us things we didn't want to hear and who are willing to offer suggestions that would be difficult for us to, to exercise. And, and Tom's not been afraid to tell us things that, that we don't want to hear or to make recommendations that are going to be difficult for us to make. And so I'd rather have the option to do the right thing, even if it's the hard thing, than to not be given that option at all. So I'd really like to just say that, that, um, the leadership, the ability to manage upwards and tell people the things that they don't want to hear, but that are true, is part of the reason why we've been successful in this last year. And for that, I, I agree that, that- And for that, I agree that Mr. Coulter deserves a bonus for that, along with the exceptional work he's done getting us financially into the right place.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair Cavey. Mr. Jito, would you like to comment?
I agree with everything that's been said.
I agree with everything that's been said, too. I would like to ask Mary Jane, if we were to approve this $7,000, how would that look? How, can we afford it? Do we have to transfer money? What is the mechanism?
So, I would have to look at the town manager's budget, but that's what we did for Robin, and then we did do a transfer after she was paid.
Okay. So, it wouldn't be immediate. We have to do a little research, but at least you have a motion that has, once we take a vote and the vote is positive or affirmative, then we give you the okay to do that, your due diligence.
So, you'd be able to pay it? It would just be by the end of June 30th? We would have to possibly do a transfer.
Okay. That's great. All right. So, on the motion, Mr. Jito. No, this is on the vote?
Oh, I thought we were all going to vote together.
Oh, well, we can.
I mean...
Well, because Mr. Carrera abstained, that's why I did a roll call vote. Mr. McCrisky?
Yes.
Vice Chair Cavey?
Yes.
And I vote yes. And Mr. Carrera abstained?
Abstained.
Thank you, members. I'm very appreciative. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Moving right along to the final agenda item for tonight's meeting, that is update on fiscal year '24 objectives. Now, before I transfer the comments to you, we still don't have a process for doing this. We have it on the agenda. We have the list. We have your responses. We had, I talked with Vice Chair Cavey. One way of doing it, just as a temporary fix, so we could be efficient in our process of going through your objectives, is to ask the board if they have any questions, and they could pull it out and we could talk on that item in detail. But did we agree on any other processes?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. So, then we need to also put the process, as an agenda item, put it on our future agenda to discuss what will be the process, but since we don't have one, this is the way to go.
Madam Chair, may I recommend a process?
Yes.
I'm going to update the board in writing every month. I think that's the minimum, at a very minimum, we should do. May I suggest that any board member through you, any given month, can ask that one of these items that I update on every month be put on the agenda for one item. It could be a 2-minute update, but that's one way by the end of the year to get through, or if it's 2 items, to get through 24 of them. But I'm going to update you every month anyway, but if a member says through the chair, "I want an update on the comprehensive financial policy process," that is a very important process, then we would put it on the agenda for that week and give you a 10-minute update on where we are in that. That's a simple approach, but it's completely up to the board, how you want us to communicate
So, with that said, does a select board member want to pull or ask Mr. Coulter to talk in detail about one of his objectives, other than the comments that he's already put in Mr. Jito is doing a little something, but... Did you want to pull anything and ask for detail? Okay. Then with that said, that's it?
Everyone's tired.
Everyone, oh, okay. Motion to adjourn. Oh, did you have something?
Motion to adjourn.
May I get a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
See you next time, everyone. I think our next meeting is December 19th. Is that correct? December 19th. Thank you very much. Bye-bye.